Welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 13, Monday, and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21. We will move to an executive session, and we'll be back here at 6:30. Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, some more.
Yep, second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're naturally passed, we will be, the executive session will be back here at 6:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Call to order, pledge of allegiance.
Aye, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing, we have a poem to read in place of a moment of silence.
Thank you, Chair. I'm going to read tonight Amanda Gorman's new poem called "A Hymn for Hurting." Thought it would give us all something to think about. "Everything hurts, our hearts shadowed and strained, minds made muddied and mute. We carry tragedy terrifying and true, and yet none of it knew. We knew it as home, as horror, as heritage. Even our children cannot be children, cannot be. Everything hurts. It's a hard time to be alive, and even harder to stay that way. We are burdened to live out these days while at the same time blessed to outlive them. This alarm is how we know we must be altered, that we must differ or die, that we must triumph or try. Thus, while hate cannot be terminated, it can be transformed into a love that lets us live. May we not just grieve but give, may we not just ache but act. May our signed right to bear arms never blind our sight from shared harm. May we choose our children over chaos, may another innocent never be lost. Maybe everything hurts, our hearts shadowed and strange, but only when everything hurts, may everything change."
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. And also the meeting also will make sure we honor veterans past and present. Thank you very much.
Please be seated. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Okay. Do we have a warrant to sign?
Coming around.
No way, okay, very good. We're doing so far, we're doing okay then. Okay, next would be the appointment of Constable Louis Barassa.
Signing the warrant, where is it?
Is Barassa here?
No.
Usually they don't show up.
Motion to approve.
Second half.
Okay, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many constables do we have available to us?
I believe there's at least...
I'm sorry.
I believe there's at least six, if not, the many as eight.
So if someone in Dartmouth needed constable services, they would, could in fact contact the town and the town would be able to give them that information?
Yeah, or they could contact the sheriff's office too, they have constable services too.
Thank you.
Okay, time to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none, passed unanimously. Thank you. Next. One-day event Mustang and all Ford car show at UMass Dartmouth.
They are not here.
They are not here.
My concern on this one is the date was this past weekend.
Yes, after the fact.
After the fact. It was?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we have had... We have had this happen in the past.
They were approved by all other approvers.
Was there any problems? Did anybody hear of any problems?
There were a lot of whole cars.
So you approved it, right? Okay, great.
Christopher Shea from the Dartmouth Weekly says that it was a nice show.
He drove a Mustang to the meeting tonight.
Motion to approve after the fact.
Second, after the fact.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, hearing none, passed unanimously. Appointment to hearing Officer Matthew Bhopaland. We're three for three here so far.
That's all right.
We usually don't have the hearing officers.
No, you're, you know, make a motion to approve.
Comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, hearing none, passed unanimously. Okay. All right, okay, we've broke the string. We have, next on board is the best harbor winner of the town of Dartmouth, Peyton Arum. And we have Mr. Steve Mello here.
Good evening, thank you for inviting me. Dartmouth Peyton Arum Harbor in particular has won the best harbor in the nation. This is the second time we've been best harbor in the nation. Last year we were best in the region, the year before that we were runner-up, and the first year of the voting we were best harbor, that was the year we opened the Maritime Center. It's all because of you.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, the last time we won the award, we were, we had the meeting, I guess I was there with Steve, I believe it was online, it was an online thing.
That was last year, we were regional winner.
Regional, okay.
And there was some technical glitch where you and I both signed in and I couldn't speak, but you said some great things on behalf of the town and it was...
So just to, just to want to, you know, be more appropriate for the chair to do it again this year.
Do we know when it's going to, the actual date?
Tomorrow at two.
Tomorrow at two, yeah.
Tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, oh, that is it, okay.
And it's a little Zoom, it says a Zoom celebration at two.
That's correct.
Yep.
I mean, it's nice because you get to talk to other, you get to meet other people from the country and their harbors and how, you know, some of the things that they do, so...
You be honest with Steve as well?
Yes.
Hopefully no glitches.
Changing appointment and I'll make sure it all works.
I'll be there at two o'clock.
But we also get, we also get some kind of a...
It's a plaque that we've had.
Yes, okay.
And the plan is to put those up at the Maritime Center.
Yep.
In order, hopefully there'll be room and we'll keep winning awards.
I like that, I like that.
Such a big room.
We can't build another bigger Maritime Center just for the awards.
Another plaque.
Second floor.
Find a way, that's our motto.
Okay, anybody else? It's a wonderful, incredible story for the town and...
Great job, Steve.
And it's only the fourth annual contest, so...
That's correct, we scored two out of four.
Two out of four, batting five hundred, not bad.
Sort of like the percussion group, you know?
Okay, thank you, Steve, appreciate you coming. We'll see you at two, hopefully.
Quarter of.
Quarter of two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make sure you're there.
Next, ARPA funding discussion.
Mr. McGinnis is ready for a presentation.
Mr. McGinnis is ready for a presentation.
So how about the Celtics?
We don't know.
Tonight's...
Tonight's a big night.
Tonight's a big night.
Tonight's the night.
Maybe you can spend the ARPA funds on a new projector.
What's that?
What's going on?
I hear it.
I want to sleep. That's what the presentation's for, for you to sleep.
Okay. There you go. I think so far it's going pretty well.
Presentation by Sonya.
Do you want to, should we approve the...
Sonya, Sonya, show.
Do you want to go into one of the other items, the minutes or...
Is that it?
Oh, wait, never mind.
Okay.
We're on.
Thank you all for your patience.
Yes, thanks for the patience, it's Monday, so this is facts. So you, you've seen pretty much this slideshow before when I presented at the workshop meeting on our budget and capital, but, you know, we're trying to reinforce some of these ARPA funding alternatives.
Excuse me, just want to, fellow, can I help you?
I was in the wrong meeting.
What are you here for?
Appointment to a constable.
You got appointed. You got appointed.
You must be Louis Barassa.
Yes.
Call to all of the pleads of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. We have a poem to read in place of our room of silence.
Thank you. I thank you, Chair. I'm going to read tonight Amanda Gorman's new poem called[60.82][60.82]"A Hymn for Hurting." Thought it would give us all something to think about. "Everything hurts, our hearts shadowed and strained, minds made muddied and mute. We carry tragedy terrifying and true, and yet none of it knew. We knew it as home, as horror, as heritage. Even our children cannot be children, cannot be. Everything hurts. It's a hard time to be alive, and even harder to stay that way. We are burdened to live out these days while at the same time blessed to outlive them. This alarm is how we know we must be altered, that we must differ or die, that we must triumph or try. Thus, while hate cannot be terminated, it can be transformed into a love that lets us live. May we not just grieve but give; may we not just ache but act. May our signed right to bear arms never blind our sight from shared harm. May we choose our children over chaos; may another innocent never be lost. Maybe everything hurts, our hearts shadowed and strange, but only when everything hurts may everything change."
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. And also the meeting also will make sure we honor veterans past and present living in disease. Thank you very much.
Please be seated. Thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Okay. Do we have a warrant to sign?
Coming around.
No way. Okay, very good. We're doing so far. We're doing okay then. Okay, next would be the appointment of Constable Louis Barassa.
Signing the warrant. Where is it?
Is Barassa here?
No.
Usually they don't show up.
He's not.
Motion to approve.
Second half.
Okay. Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many constables do we have available to us?
I don't have that.
I believe there's at least.
I'm sorry.
I believe there's at least six, if not, the many as eight.
So if someone in Dartmouth needed constable services, they would could in fact contact the town and the town would be able to give them that information?
Or they could contact the sheriff's office too. They have constable services too.
Thank you.
Okay. Time to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Passed unanimously. Thank you. Next. One-day event Mustang and all Ford car show at UMass Dartmouth.
Yes, they are not here.
They are not here.
My concern on this one is the date was this past weekend.
Yes, after the fact.
After the fact. Okay, it was?
Yes.
Unfortunately, we have had.
Schedule for Saturday, June 11.
We have had this happen in the past.
They were approved by all other approvers.
Was there any problems? Did anybody did anybody hear of any problems?
There were a lot of cool cars.
Yeah.
So you approved it. Okay, great.
Christopher Shea from the Dartmouth Weekly says that it was a nice show.
Okay.
He drove a Mustang to the meeting tonight.
Motion to approve after the fact.
Second after the fact.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ahead, none. Passed unanimously. Appointment to hearing Officer Matthew Bhopaland. We're three for three here so far.
That's all right.
We usually don't have the hearing officers.
No, you're you're you know, make a motion to approve.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, hearing none. Passed unanimously. Okay. All right, okay, we've broke the string. We have, next on board is the best harbor winner of the town of Dartmouth, Peyton Airman. We have Mr. Steve Mello here.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me. Dartmouth Peyton Arum Harbor in particular has won the best harbor in the nation. This is the second time we've been best harbor in the nation. Last year we were best in the region. The year before that, we were runner-up. And the first year of the voting, we were best harbor. That was the year we opened the Maritime Center. It's all because of you.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Well, the last time we won the award, we were we had the meeting, I guess I was there with Steve. I believe it was online. It was an online thing.
That was last year. We were regional winner.
Regional, okay.
And there was some technical glitch where you and I both signed in and I couldn't speak, but you said some great things on behalf of the town and it was.
So just to just to want to, you know, be more appropriate for the chair to do it again this year.
Do we know when it's going to, the actual date?
Tomorrow at two.
Tomorrow at two, yeah.
Tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, oh, that is it. Okay.
And it's a little zoom. It says a Zoom celebration at two.
That's correct.
Yep.
I mean, it's nice because you get to talk to other. You get to meet other people from the country and their harbors and how, you know, some of the things that they do.
You be honest with Steve as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully no glitches.
Change an appointment and I'll make sure it all works.
Okay. I'll be there at two o'clock.
Great.
But we also get we also get some kind of a.
It's a plaque.
Yes.
That we've had.
Okay.
And the plan is to put those up at the Maritime Center.
Yep.
In order, hopefully there'll be room and we'll keep winning awards.
I like that. I like that.
Such a big room.
We can't build. We can't build another bigger Maritime Center just for the awards.
Another plaque.
Second floor.
Yeah, okay.
Find a way. That's our motto.
Okay, anybody else? It's a wonderful, incredible story for the town and.
Great job, Steve.
And it's only the fourth annual contest, so.
That's correct. We scored.
Two out of four. Two out of four, batting 500. Not bad.
Sort of like the percussion group, you know.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you coming. We'll see you at two, hopefully.
Quarter of.
Quarter of two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Make sure you're there.
Next, ARPA funding discussions. Mr. McGinnis is ready for a presentation. So how about the Celtics?
We don't know.
Tonight's.
Tonight's a big night.
Tonight's a big night.
Tonight's the night.
Maybe you can spend the ARPA funds on a new projector.
What's that?
What's going on?
I hear it.
That's what the presentation's for, for you to sleep.
There you go. I think so far it's going pretty well.
Presentation by Sonya.
Do you want to, should we approve the?
Sonya. Sonya, show.
Do you want to go into one of the other items, the minutes or?
Is that it?
Oh, wait, never mind.
Okay.
We're on.
Thank you all for your patience.
Yes, thanks for the patience. It's Monday, so this is back. So you you've seen pretty much this slideshow before when I presented at the workshop meeting on our budget and capital. But, you know, we're trying to reinforce some of these ARPA funding alternatives.
Just want to, fellow, can I help you?
I was in the wrong meeting.
What are you here for?
Appointment to a council.
You got appointed. You got appointed.
You must be Louis Barassa.
Yes.
Congratulations.
You want to you want to just introduce yourself?
Introduce yourself, little background, please.
My name is Louis Barassa. I've been living in the general area. I live right over the Dartmouth line in the Baffet my entire life. And I retired about four years ago and I wanted to go into a different line of work, you know, that and this is the line I wanted to go towards.
What did you do before?
I was, I owned a bunch of smoke stops.
Uh-huh.
Me and my father. My father, my father passed away just this past Christmas, so and we retired a couple of years ago, so I wanted to get away from anything we did together and do something different.
Good for you.
So this is why I want to be appointed.
Well, you got you got the appointment.
Yep.
So you're.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
I thank you.
Is there any paperwork I need?
You have to go see the clerk.
Okay.
We'll send that to you.
I think, yeah, I didn't know. How can I stay?
Thank you very much.
Enjoy your weekend. Have a nice weekend.
Okay, weekend. You're kidding.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry for the interruption, Mr. McGinnis.
No, no problem.
Would've been a long night for him.
Yeah.
So the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, as many of you know, has, you know, eligible uses. There's four of them and you've you've heard these. I'm repeating a lot of it, but I just want to reinforce it. The first is investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. The second is revenue replacement for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to COVID. Also, the third is for COVID-19 expenditures and negative economic impacts of COVID. And last is premium pay for essential workers. So the town of Dartmouth, it's estimated will have a total ARPA award from the government of 10.2 million. And I'm breaking it down as we'll we'll, some of it we receive directly from the federal government. Some of it is sent to Bristol County, in which we have to apply through Bristol County to be reimbursed for those funds. So we anticipate receiving directly from the federal government 3.58 million. Will be eligible for county reimbursement to the tune of 5.76 million. And we're estimating Bristol County is going to hold back a portion of the funds. Right now, we're estimating 10%, which would be about $877,000. So that's leaves us with funds to be committed by 2024 of 9.34 million. For FY23, we looked at what we could fund from the funds we have available and tried to do that judiciously, but also to implement some projects that are more high-profile that show a benefit to the community. Not that they don't, but some of them are more high-profile than others. And I'll go through this list. The first set is emergency generators for Mosher Jr. and Sharon Street pump stations. These are all DPW-related water and sewer infrastructure. Purchased and installation of three biofilter blowers and variable frequency drives. Rebuild belt filter presses for a wastewater treatment facility. Switchgear maintenance for wastewater treatment. Sewer Department operational study. The board has requested that the DPW look to do operational studies. This would fund that. Inflow and infiltration remediation of 25,000 and SCADA improvements and controls upgrades. SCADA is the computerized system that runs all their pump stations and monitors the facility. In addition to that, we have some projects on the the other side, not DPW-related, which are HVAC upgrades for multiple schools and digital control systems. That's to the tune of 684,386. High school tennis court reconstruction, $100,000. The Dartmouth Regional Park tennis basketball and pickleball court renovation, that's about $460,000. The Recreation Center Design and Engineering, this 1.192, $1,192,000. I mean, that's a big expense. We've talked about the Recreation Center multiple times. It's been well-received in the community. Purchase of the property at 245 Russell Mills Road. This was on the warrant we just had last week, and this was approved at town meeting to be purchased, so the board would have to approve this funding mechanism. Town website upgrade. We've been looking to upgrade the town's website for almost two years now. We have proposals from multiple vendors to the tune of $60,000. We are applying for grant funds to try to get this reimbursed. We were not awarded. Cody's applied twice. So if we're able to get grant funds, we'll certainly go that route. And Russell Mills Road pickleball courts. This is right where Russell Mills Road meets Solcom Road. There's existing basketball courts that are underutilized and underused. This would enhance the whole area to provide pickleball courts and basketball as well as some lighting and some fencing. So those are the proposed projects. When you break it down on a pie chart, you can see this still leaves 56% or 5.177 million dollars unallocated for FY24. 7% would go to town government. 18% would go to Parks and Rec, the majority of that being the Recreation Center design. And you can see 19% would go to DPW. So there's still quite a bit of funds left to be expended for FY24. So when you look at the summary of our capital expenditures, there's the 9.34 million. We're proposing 4.1 for FY23, leaving 5.17 for FY24. We've gotten some other requests, but there's also some other eligible expenditures that I've lifted listed here. The first is capital project cost overages. I think we've seen since COVID, you know, a number of capital projects that were funded are coming in well over the original estimated costs. We're proposing for FY24 that maybe we put aside a portion of the ARPA funding to cover those cost overages for these projects. High school roof needs to be replaced. That's about 4.45 million. And I haven't pronounced these here. That's something we would also seek MSBA funding for. Water and sewer infrastructure improvements, there's another 1.7 beyond what was listed here earlier. As I've mentioned before, the Dartmouth Housing Authority is looking for an additional 900,000 for their Mendes Montero House. However, they have been, the state has committed 840,000 of their ARPA fund to the project, so that would cover the majority of what the Dartmouth Housing Authority is seeking. And the Dartmouth Regional Park playground replacement, that's about 998,000, but they're also seeking CPC funds for that option. What are some other large future capital expenditures? I think you all are aware of these, but the Recreation Center, if that was to go forward, the Peyton Arum Bridge needs to be replaced. Dias Landing, they're proposing the Small Boat Marina, as you know. The study was done. Bliss Corner was still not sure what the cost impact would be, if any. The EPA is out there. They've started last week. They started to remediate five of the properties. Lake Nokichoke, I mean, this is on the Select Board's agenda every week. There's been no progress or any communication, but we still aren't sure what the final outcome will be that with the City of Fall River. The Tucker Road intersection, you've already mentioned that Mass DOT has an alternative to their original design, which included a relocation of the Tucker Road intersection. Their alternative is slated for 2025 to be constructed. Their alternative allows for the town to still construct the relocated Tucker Road intersection, so the town would be on the hook to fund that relocation. And then the Dartmouth Schools, which is a large one, but the schools are up for replacement in the future. The cost in the timeline is still yet to be determined. And that's our ARPA presentation, but you can see where we're at this year, what we would like to fund for FY23. We think it's a good mix of water and sewer infrastructure, but also projects that would benefit the community. And then it still leaves a substantial amount for FY24.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes. Can we go back to the Housing Authority project that Connie that Connie's running? Where does that actually stand? Is it is it all approved or is it not approved? Or because we told her we were going to help her out and then we just kind of ignored her.
No, well, approved in what way? Is the project completely funded?
Right.
I don't think there could. I think it was funded at one time. I think there's been overages as part of that. They haven't started construction. So they've been looking for additional funds. They've come to the town. The town has contributed, the CPC, I think, contributed $700,000 already to that project.
Excuse me.
As you know, it's a house for eight residences, for disabled veterans, but the Mass Department of Health assigns the residents who will live there, they may or may not be Dartmouth residents. The town has been supportive of the project. You all have been very supportive of the project. We have Connie's request. She's given it to us for a while. We've kept that aside for the board to look to evaluate and look at. Recently, we became aware of the ARPA commitment from the state. So we're, you know, very happy to hear about that and.
I would add also Frank that I'm going to a meeting with Cody with the Housing Authority on the 30th, and we're going to see where we stand, what they how far they've gone. We'll report back after that meeting. So the meeting's on June 30th.
Okay, but as I understand it, their project is time-sensitive. And it sounds like we're jerking it around and that's.
We're really not. And I wasn't under the impression that it's time-sensitive. She's never made that. I think she's looking for a funding commitment in writing, which we couldn't do until the board evaluates. And if we're going to use ARPA funding, the board needs to evaluate like they're doing now and then take a vote. And then if the vote board votes affirmative to fund whatever amount, then we would put that in writing. But until the board takes a vote on that, we couldn't give her any solid commitment.
Okay, but she wrote something that said there was some time sensitivity to the whole thing.
Well, she has in the past about the time sensitivity was trying to get a commitment for the funding, but if the board had signed that commitment previously, she also got the 840,000 from the state commitment as well. So she she got what she was looking seeking. Well, $60,000 less, but 840 of the 900,000 is what the state's committed.
So so the simple question is, is she all set now or is she not all set?
She appears to be all set. She asked for 900 from the town. The state awarded her 840, which she was not anticipating, so that covers her costs less $60,000, her request.
Okay. My understanding is that I think we need to get some more clarification, which we'll do on the 30th. I'll report back.
When did we find out about this ARPA from the state?
Maybe a month and a half ago.
And she wouldn't she have been aware of that?
She said she was not aware of it. We brought it to her attention.
Uh-huh. So she had no, they sent her no correspondence?
Apparently. I'm not sure. Yeah, I don't know. We were notified of it, so we had we had, and she had sent a subsequent request after the fact. And we said, well, we just found out that you are in line for this funding.
And that's great.
It's great. Yeah, we're very excited.
Yeah.
It sounds like Dave would get information on the 30th.
I think we need some potential clarification.
At that meeting, the meeting that you go to. And then at the subsequent meeting, we would then know.
Correct.
How much money. Maybe it will be only $60,000.
Yeah, I don't know the answer at all, so we'll find out.
Right, so June 30th, you.
My concern was if it's time-sensitive, that may be too late. That's why I'm asking.
I don't think that's a case.
Well, it's Frank, are you thinking that we should include at least $60,000 in this?
I don't know. I think we should ask Connie.
Well, the meeting's on the 30th and they're they're trying to have a meeting with all the parties. So she's requested that the town be represented there, so.
And we don't have this funding right now. We don't.
We have some of the funding that we've received directly from the federal government.
Okay, so we have.
Frank, do you want me to, are you asking to reach out to her before the meeting to find out if it is time-sensitive?
Well, if you could, somebody should. That's a, she's been kind of antsy about the whole thing about losing it and everything. And I don't want her to lose. I mean, we told her we support the project, so I don't want her to then get ready to do something with the project then to find out there's no funding.
Okay, I will ask. I don't, I didn't get that impression, but I will, I'll reach out to her.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm looking at the DPW requests and looking back at what we just approved at town meeting for DPW. And are these items on their five-year plan?
Yes.
So this would just move them up?
Correct.
So these are kind of items that have been maybe pushed forward a bit and now they're going to get done?
Well, some of them they would be looking to fund through the capital plan. You know, they're enterprise funds, so they would be using, you know, their retained earnings. But the ARPA funding allows for water and sewer infrastructure, so they're looking to fund these. So these are items that have been on their capital plan that they're looking to do. The belt filter press, I think they were trying to do next year. So if it's not funded through ARPA, they'll fund it through their capital.
And from what I understand about ARPA, they encourage projects like this. This is what they like more than anything else, yeah.
Well, I certainly think this is something that if these, especially like the inflow and infiltration remediation, if these are projects that are going to give the townspeople who have been so concerned about water quality some peace, even though right now we're we're fine, I think it's something that we need to go forth with.
I agree. It's an opportunity for them to, you know, modernize the system with some funding that they would not have access to. So it's looking to take advantage of it.
We're we're still kicking the can down the road with the with the bridge.
Yes.
Every year, we kick it down a little further. And one day, it's not, it's going to be, it's not going to work.
Wait, so we're currently seeking a grant for design funds for the bridge.
Yeah, I can't imagine, but we all know how much, what type of flak we caught during the during the the Cosway building and that they had to go all the way around. This would, especially now with what Peyton Arum is doing and drawing enormous amount of people in that village.
Yes, yes.
We need to be on it all the time because that day is going to come.
So so a conundrum decision we would have is to spend some of our own ARPA money on it as opposed to trying to wait for the state to get.
We're talking serious dough here.
Right, well, I think that future future capital expenditures has a number of items. We know the rec center is going to be many millions. Peyton Arum Bridge, Dartmouth Schools, rebuilding any one of those schools is going to be considerable. So we have some big-ticket items on this list that ARPA will help with maybe design, but won't build a Don thing.
Mr. Barnes, you have something to say?
Yeah, there are restriction.
Right ahead. Glad to hear from you.
There are restrictions on how we can use the county monies in particular.
For instance, is there?
We can't, it gets a little complicated, but they got 109 million dollars. They have what's called a 10 million standard allowance. With their 10% holdback, they're holding back the the standard allowance that allows them to spend it in in very general ways. So we're really restricted on the county monies to spending it for sewer, water, and broadband infrastructure.
You're talking about.
We can also do housing, but we can't and and public safety, but we can't, for example, use it for the to build the new school or or a bridge. It doesn't qualify.
So you're saying that the money from because on the one of the earlier slides, it talked about the eligible projects and exactly what the money can be used for. But you're saying of the money, there's only a percent that you can use for certain things.
County money.
Yeah, the town monies, we're pretty free to use it on anything other than stuff like debt service and we can't put it toward stabilization. But the county monies, we are restricted in how we can use it.
And so that's the 5.76 million dollars.
That is correct. So we couldn't use it toward the the bridge. We could not use it toward building a new school. We could use it for HVAC because that's considered to be public health-related. We could use it for sewer and water because that was specifically allowed by the the Act. We could use it for affordable housing through a nonprofit because that, again, was specifically allowed through the Act. But the, right now, again, with the standard allowance, the 10% holdback is roughly 10 million. The county wants to use it to fix up the Superior Courts. And in order for them to do that, they need to use the standard allowance themselves. So they're they're keeping it. It appears at this time, they're keeping the proportion that allows you to use it liberally and hence are restricting what all the communities can use with the with the monies.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Ms. McDonald? I just, the idea of the rec center and the cost it's going to be, I'm not sure how much we've we've vetted this to the town and how it's going to do and what we're going to do. I know that we've had, there's a great, there's a great acceptance for the concept. But when along came the price to build this project, it it was astounding for considering what it is. It's a big gym with a couple of offices and a track around. It's a big gym with a couple of offices and a track around it and fortunately it's cost more than the police station. And I, it's kind of scary and, and we're faced with the same situation now with the field, the turf field, in that the cost is going to, became exorbitant on the second phase because that's the way costs are going. So I, I don't know, I'm, personally, I'm like nervous about the Rec Center in terms of the enormous cost and what it's gonna do to eat up funds and where it's gonna come from and how we're gonna fund it. And we had never really had that discussion.
Well, we, we have talked about, that was part of the feasibility study.
Agreed.
You know, that's the design, you know, the feeling was if the design is done, there's, you know, ARPA funding, I've talked to Representative Marky about this and it's hopeful that in 2024, you know, a lot of communities and states need to spend this ARPA funding by 2024 and they may or may not be ready to expend it all. So there could be money available, much like when the Causeway was repaired. It was shovel ready, the funds became available, so it got done. So, and there's also a number of ways to look at funding, either through private donations, through some state grants or in through, you know, the town to cover the costs as well. So, but until you get the design done, it's hard to, you know, pursue those avenues. So it's nice to have something shovel ready, I think.
So it's a million dollar investment to then go out and find out how we're gonna pay for it.
Well, I do think that the ARPA money is sort of that found money. And I know that when we have looked at partnering with the marijuana grow facilities and they have told us how much money that will be coming our way, I'm looking at that as found money that can extend some of the projects that we're looking at. For better, better, bettering our town for what our townspeople need through those. And so I'm looking at this as a possibility, but we still have one more meeting. Is it next week? Cody with the recreation and?
28th.
The 28th. So just plug that, the 28th, you can go on the website and get more information, but the 28th we're meeting at Southworth Library. And that's, that's the final of the three meetings that the town has set up and it would be a good opportunity for people to come out that night and, and hear about the Rec Center and others. We're gonna be talking about stuff we need. And I, I understand you looking at the Rec Center going, you know, 1.1 and that's just for design and engineering. And I'm looking at $330,000 for pickleball courts. And another $460,000, so we're talking about a million dollars between tennis, basketball, pickleball courts all outside.
Yep.
And the tennis court reconstruction up at the high school. So we have a lot of recreation. The, the point is gonna be before we commit that, we need to make sure that the town will be using them.
Giant expenditures.
And, and you know, one thing to mention with the Rec Center, not to go through the whole, the, the selling of it, but it's more than just basketball courts. It's a central location in town. It's a place to have town meeting, particularly in COVID, there was no central location to do vaccination clinics that would provide that. So it serves, it's also an emergency shelter. It would be generator powered, so it has a number of functions.
That's an important piece too.
I'm very much in favor of the project. I, I'm hopeful I did.
And I like the, the site that was selected as well.
It's also indoors. So, and, and so the weather means nothing. They can be playing pickleball at seven o'clock in the morning in December or January, February. Plus they could have meetings or they could have basketball late into the night for seniors or, you know, different groups. The, the building will be utilized, not 24 hours a day, but an awful lot, a lot more than we actually anticipate.
Yeah, I agree.
And we do have flexibility with all these courts, outside courts, and maybe we can do some and not others.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, if I gave the impression I wasn't in favor of the Rec Center, I.
Oh, no, I mean, these are, these are great questions that come up.
I think your concern is how do we fund the Rec Center ultimately? I mean, this is great, but it's.
A shocking number, 14 main is a shocking number.
Everything is shocking today.
It is, it is. It's not gonna get any better for a while.
It's not gonna, you're right, it will not get better. And the more that, the more that we postpone some of these projects, the longer we'll get to a point where we'll not be able to afford it.
I, I think the point here is that all these listings, the first foray from DPW seems like critically important and the, and the ARPA funding people love these kind of projects, so it's kind of a no brainer. But beyond that, we need to make sure that we continue to review these and, and on a, on a line by line basis in terms of what we want to go forward with.
Right, and I think too, we should look at the five-year plan that capital improvement has and see if there are projects. Certainly it sounds like DPW projects, should they have been on that list, it would have been appropriate use to push them ahead. Some projects become urgent.
It also gets difficult too because projects take time, they need to be bid out and the funds need to be committed by 2024. So it sounds, you know, it's a substantial amount of money, but until, to actually identifying what you want to spend it on and then committing it, it to be by 2024, that's, it's pretty quick. And there's a number of projects DPW is working on right now that, you know, we want to make sure that they can get them done.
We don't want to be in back of the line, we're in front of the line.
Right.
And I think it's appropriate that the town hasn't given us.
Front of the line.
So the board obviously doesn't have to make any decisions tonight, so I figured, you know, we presented this and we'll come back maybe in July or August, whatever, you know, the board wants to, to talk about it again.
But the, but staying on top of it and being in front of it to make sure we get all we deserve is top priority.
Yes, that is our primary goal, to make sure we get the funding.
Thank you for making the presentation. Anybody else?
Just a quick, the locations of the two pickleball areas. The DAP, the Dartmouth Rec Center Public Tennis Courts, that's the landing?
Uh, that's the regional park.
It's the regional park north.
In north.
North, yeah.
And then the Russell's Mills Pickleball Courts, it's Crepo?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, across from Friendly Pizza almost like right there. It's like right where Russell's meets Slocum.
So just, just as a, made aware of, that basketball court area was named after Jason Robinson, who was, okay, just want to make sure.
We would maintain basketball at the location.
Just want to make sure that that is maintained.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I, we haven't even really authorized.
Well, no, I'm just saying if anything goes there and you need to be made aware of it, it'd be like doing, you know, doing something on Chase Road and Old Westport Road, you know, you have a memorial there for a veteran, you know, so you have to be made aware of that that's there. You have to make sure that nothing happens to that or at least it's built up better, you know, anywhere, so.
Need to honor.
That it's not erased.
We need to honor his.
Point is, we've got work to do and we want to make sure that people are gonna be involved in decision-making process of which ones we do and how we do it.
Correct.
Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else with all set? Next. Line item transfer. You're up. Mr. Barnes?
So you've done a few of these, so I think you know how it goes. We have until July 15th to do line item transfers to handle gaps within the budget. One of the gaps that we will have is with legal services. The reason for this gap is you have an account called Special Counsel. You have budgeted 20,000 for that. As of last week, you spent 190,851. The main reason for this was Bliss Corner, of which you've spent 181,532 of that 191,000. Keep in mind that includes both the legal services and consultants go through the, the attorney, so that's consultant services as well.
That's all part of that money, right? The consult, that's not just legal fees?
It's, it's a legal bill, but it's the whole package.
Correct, okay.
So due to that overage, the overall account, once you factor in what Anthony and Howard are likely to charge for the rest of the year, you will have a deficit. We're estimating, and this is an estimate, I stress, 70,000. It could be less, but we, we tried to come up with something to avoid having to come back. And the, the place we would get the money from is unemployment expense. There was, fortunately this year, there was a very large overage due to the fact that we went from 110,000 to literally spending to date 13,400.
Don't jinx us.
Yeah. Hard to predict.
Any question, comments?
Make a motion that we approve the transfer of 70,000 to the legal counsel services from unemployment expense.
Second. Second. Questions or comments for anybody else on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, hearing none, unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you. And we're hoping that's it for line item transfers this year, but we'll let you know if, if a surprise comes up.
Okay. Thank you again. Next would be personnel director contract.
Yes, so we have a new personnel administrator, Denise Coleman. She is scheduled to start July 5th and this is, the board needs to sign off on her personal contract agreement that's been agreed upon.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to talk, to talk about it at all? Want to wait till she comes?
Uh, no, we'll have her in at the next select board meeting after she starts.
Okay. Any action to take tonight?
After vote.
We do. Questions on the item?
I'm pleased that she's the candidate and pleased that she was able to, to accept our contract.
So is that a motion?
It's a three-year contract.
Correct.
Is that a motion?
Ms. Brooks, was that a motion?
Yes, sorry.
Second.
I shouldn't accept.
It's a three-year contract?
Correct, yes.
When we sign it, do we date it?
Do we need?
We need to vote. Now, we've got a motion and accept.
Okay. Do we need to express any details?
Uh, no.
Okay. We have a second?
We do.
We did, okay. Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay, let's have a vote. All in favor? Aye. Aye, aye, opposed, I hear none, passes unanimously. Welcome. We look forward to having you, Denise. Today's date is what?
Thank you.
13.
Okay, not two. Okay, next would be the cable contract, legal counsel contract.
Yes, our, the town has a franchise agreement with Comcast, most communities and the state do. They're 10-year contracts. The town's contract is up in 2023. In order to negotiate that contract, we generally bring on legal counsel specializing in franchise agreements with cable providers. So in our contract, in your packet, we have an agreement contract with Epstein in August, LLP. They are gonna provide services for the town. The funding will come from DCTV's retained earnings to pay for the legal consultation.
Okay.
And the board just needs to vote to have me sign off on the contract.
Any questions before we entertain a motion?
Motion to sign the legal counsel contract.
Second.
Cable contract.
Second. Second. Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, aye, opposed, hearing none, passes unanimously.
Interesting one to come up with.
Next would be whole business?
Yes, so COVID, no new updates. Bliss Corner, as we discussed, the EPA is out on site remediating five properties with their staging area at the old police station site on Russell's Mills Road. So they continue to make progress and we, our Board of Health Director, Chris Michaud works, has been working closely with the EPA on this. And Lake Nokichoke, there's no new updates.
Have they talked about the length of the projects at Bliss Corner?
They, not that I'm aware of when they're, they're gonna finish. I know they talked a lot about starting and they have, so.
It's out of our hands.
Yes, the EPA is overseeing the entire project.
If anyone has any questions or comments about it, who can they address?
They can contact our office or the Health Director's office or the EPA or DEP directly through our website.
Sounds like Mr. Michaud would be a good place to go.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to have Mr. Michaud come to a meeting in a few weeks?
As it come along, yep.
As it comes along, just to tell us how it's coming?
Absolutely. So we, we kind of watching from, observing from the side, but they're in charge, but we, we should monitor it and let people know what's going on. That's the idea.
Take pictures.
Yeah. Uh, okay. We have minutes from May 23, 2022.
I didn't see anything.
Any comments or questions on the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Questions, comments? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, none, passes unanimously. The minutes are in the book. Announcements or information? Anybody? Mr. McDonald?
Hi, Nelson.
What are we gonna talk about the?
I have no idea.
Class game?
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, just tomorrow, it is tomorrow, right, Peter? Thank you. Tomorrow, the high school girls lacrosse team will be playing Bedford. Is it?
In Bedford.
In Bedford.
In Bedford.
On Bedford TV.
Yeah, it'll be on Bedford TV, but they also have a YouTube, live YouTube. So if you want to see it, just look, just somehow Google or go on YouTube and put down Bedford, Massachusetts lacrosse and find something. You, people know how to do this stuff, except my mother. The, is, is this the semis or is this, this is not the states?
No, this, this is state, but it's, they.
I know it's the states.
Eight teams left.
Eight round of eight.
Eight teams, right.
Round of eight, okay, so it's quarters. It's the quarters.
Getting serious now, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I was able to see part of the game yesterday. I was wicked impressed. Girls are wonderful, great team, teammate.
It's wonderful that we now have the turf field because once you go into tournaments, all tournament locations have turf and we were certainly at a disadvantage, our teams were at a disadvantage previously. So it's wonderful that we have the turf, that our, our teams play and practice on the turf because now it makes them, you know, able to compete at a higher level.
Well, that and eligible for state, you know, for state regional games too, so, which is, you know, unfortunately controlled by the MIA and they're just money hungry pigs.
Oh, boy.
We're not gonna get.
Tell us how you feel.
Not getting any contracts now.
I was thinking, however, we wouldn't want them on Monday that we have a select board.
I thought, I thought we might be able to get some money in the till.
No, I guess not, I guess not. That bridge has been shut down.
I'm sorry, when I was on the school committee, I served on the football committee for the MIA and, you know.
Well, no good, no good as well.
Yeah, but that was in 19.
I, I, I kin the MIA to county government, so.
Okay. My favorite.
We need them too.
Ms. Brooks.
10% of our money.
I just wanted to give a shout out to all of the schools will be coming to a close Friday. And, you know, they have all their end of year activities. Families who are looking at the long summer break, the school department and the Department of Recreation have a number of opportunities for students to, to join, as well as a summer school option for students. It's a long summer with nothing to do and I, I hope our families do take, take part in that. But also I want to give a shout out to all the students and teachers who, when Friday rolls around, they will have completed a more normal, 180-day school year. I do know that only recently did some of our cafeterias go back to actually sitting at tables and not the desks, so.
That was my favorite class.
A lot of people, it's their favorite class.
It's great.[1738.74]